I'd like to call the July 5th Common Council Meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM. We will begin with Councilwoman Cutler, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call for Treasurer Parthenon.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilwoman Kineshny.
Present.
Councilwoman Frankie.
Here.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilwoman Vincent.
Here.
Councilwoman Galloway.
Here.
All present.
Approval of minutes, do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion?
I'm sorry, I have a slight correction for Dr.
Councilwoman Kineshny.
Well, hello. The correction is for the Airport Authority, Dr. Powers, his lease will begin in July, not June. Thank you.
Any other comments? I do have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Petitions and comments from citizens? I do have one, please, Sierra Sue Jess, please come forward, state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Sierra Sue Jess and I live at 204 Jefferson Avenue. 202 Jefferson Avenue has been abandoned for four years plus. The city's officials say that it's not habitable. There's graffiti on it, there's trash and weeds and volunteer trees and vines and brush between the house and my property line. The city hasn't even kept the lawn mowed. I had to complain just the end of last week to get them to mow part of it. I've been mowing some of it, but I can't mow it all. There is vines on the fence line taking up part of the public street. So there is where people can walk on Adams' side of the house. And at this point, I think it's time the city just tears the thing down and cleans up the whole lot. And that, and one other thing, the tree that is on the tree lawn on Adams' side, on the Adams Street, the branches are too low. When I walk underneath that tree to get to my garage, I'm hitting the tree limbs. And my boys are both taller than me, so they have a harder time yet than I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. I'm not sure if the city owns that home. Just because we condemn it doesn't necessarily we take ownership, but we will definitely check that out. Thank you. Any other comments from the public, seeing none, anything? We will now move, we're gonna hold if all right with the council. We will move or hold standing committee reports because we have Zoom available while it lasts. Would like to move to number 10, introduction of a resolution. Councilwoman West.
Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution read for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Councilwoman West.
Your Honor, I move to introduce a, oh, gosh. Okay, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana approving a lease between the City of LaPorte Redevelopment Authority and the City of LaPorte Redevelopment Commission and addressing other matters related thereto. Whereas, the City of LaPorte Redevelopment Commission has adopted a resolution approving a proposed lease agreement in the form presented at this meeting for the purpose of paying the principal and interest on one or more series of lease rental revenue bonds to be issued by the City of LaPorte Redevelopment Authority pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-14.5 for purposes of financing and/or refinancing the construction of certain capital improvements in or serving the city. And whereas, the Common Council desires to approve the lease pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-14-25.2, which provides that any lease approved by a resolution of the commission must be approved by an ordinance or resolution of the fiscal body of the unit. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana as follows. Section 1, Approval of Lease and Bonds. The Common Council hereby approves the lease substantially in the form of Exhibit A heretofore approved by the commission pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-14-25.2. The maximum annual rentals under the lease shall not exceed $380,000. The maximum interest rate on the bonds to be issued by the authority, which bonds are that hereby approved, to be issued in a maximum principal amount not to exceed $2,750,000, shall not exceed 6%. The term of the lease shall not extend beyond 20 years. The bonds may include a provision for the payment of capitalized interest and shall have such redemption provisions as the authority shall determine prior to the issuance of such bonds. Section 2, Pledge of Certain Local Income Tax Revenues to Commission. The Common Council hereby pledges to the commission during the term of the lease, the expen- expenditure.
Thank you.
Rate Public Safety Revenues, public safety component of the city's local income tax revenues. The mayor of the city is hereby authorized to amend the city's plan for the pledged lit revenues to reflect the pledge of set forth herein. The mayor of the city is hereby authorized to enter into a plea agreement with the commission to evidence the pledge set forth herein. Section 3, Authorization of Other Actions. Each of the mayor and the clerk treasurer of the city individually is hereby authorized and directed for and on behalf of the city to execute and deliver any contract agreement, certificate, instrument, or other document and to take action as such person determines to be necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution. Such determination to be conclusively evidenced by such person's execution of such contract, agreement, certificate, instrument, or other document or such person's taking of such action. In addition, the mayor of the city is hereby authorized to transfer, convey, and assign to the authority pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-11-8 as amended, all interests or rights of the city to the real property subject to the lease as may be necessary to finance and/or refinance the project. And the mayor is hereby authorized and directed for and on behalf of the city to execute and deliver any contract agreement, certificate, instrument, or document and to take any action as he determines to be necessary or appropriate to accomplish such transfer, conveyance, and assignment. Section 4, Effective Date. This resolution shall be in full force and effect after its passage by the Common Council as required by law and a resolution.
We do have Sam Schrader from Baker Tilly that would like to do a little more, further understanding of this. Sam, welcome.
Yeah, thanks. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. My name is Sam Schrader. I do work with Andy Mauser at Baker Tilly. And we serve as the municipal advisor to the City Redevelopment Commission, Redevelopment Authority. We did just kind of want to take this opportunity, appreciate you guys introducing the resolution. But we wanted to just take a moment just to kind of talk about the why, you know, in terms of this specific financing structure with the Redevelopment Authority and Redevelopment Commission. So as you guys are aware, each entity has a statutory debt limit that restricts the amount of bonds that can be issued with property taxes and local income taxes. And therefore, with the cost of financing, the fire truck and training facility, the need for a bond would be in a size that would exceed the remaining debt limit for the city, which is approximately $1.8 million, just for your reference. So therefore, we needed to look into using a lease financing structure, which is not uncommon throughout the state or LaPorte. You guys have used lease financings, I think most recently for the Newport Landing Bonds in 2021. But it's ultimately a mechanism that allows you to still issue local income tax debt, but outside the debt limit capacity. So it was then the suggestion of Barnes and Thornburg, serving as bond counsel, that we use a lease financing structure that involves the commission and Redevelopment Authority because it was the fastest way to complete the approval process and obtain the bond proceeds. Just basically streamline approvals and was ultimately the cheapest route. If you guys have any questions as I kind of go through this, you know, please let me know. But with that kind of introduction, kind of to lean back to the resolution, there's really two big things that we wanted to talk through, and that's really is Section 1 and Section 2. And a lot of them, a lot of them being just kind of maximums that are being set in these legal documents. And again, just kind of the reason for why those maximums are set. So, you know, throughout this process, once we started running, you know, financing scenarios for the city, it's been our plan all along to fit within a budgeted amount of $380,000 annually. So that's what we have set as the maximum lease rental payment for these bonds. Those funds, from our understanding, have been earmarked for this purpose in terms of the contribution that they'll be payable from the public safety lit component. Other than that, some maximums here, we have maximum principal amount not to exceed $2.75 million. Currently, you know, estimating that, given the current project costs, that that bond will be closer to about 2.4 million, but that just gives us a little bit, a little bit of cushion in case there's some unforeseen circumstances that arise. Additionally, maximum interest rate about 6%. Again, you know, there's as much uncertainty in the market right now as there's ever been. We, again, currently estimate those rates to probably range closer to 3% to 4%. Again, just kind of allows us to not have to come back, you know, to the well if and for whatever reason, a month or two, something crazy happens in terms of interest rates. And then again, a max term of 20 years. Again, in our discussions, we are kind of targeting a bond in the eight to 15-year range, knowing that we kind of have that flexibility just in case to go out a little bit longer. But ultimately, the main structuring goal for these bonds, again, to kind of fit within that maximum payment amount of $380,000. And then the last thing just wanted to touch on here, Section 2 of the resolution that really just discusses the pledged revenues that'll go towards the payment on these bonds, and that being, again, the public safety lit. So that's, again, the city's part in this financing, although a little bit uncommon since it's going through the RDA and REC. The city would pledge that public safety lit to the commission to be able to make those lease rental payments. With that, I'd just like to step back if there's any other questions on kind of the financing structure, how everything will work. I'd be happy to answer some of those questions.
I have a question. I don't, I don't recall the exact lit dollar amount that we're getting annually, but what percentage is 380? What does that make up out of the total?
It was 1.9, estimated 1.9. So this is, was it 600 or?
Three.
380,000, so.
Does that leave us enough room there for our first responders for raises and other equipment and stuff like that?
So when, you know, when we were going for the lit, we had to do something for our police and fire that were leaving. So based on the 1.9, a million dollars each year will come off the top right away, off that 1.9 to fulfill those raises that we gave. And then from there, you know, we've got some other things that were, that the police and fire both have needed. And, you know, we have the fitness bonus, the clothing allowance, those will also be annual items that come out. So, you know, I would say this board did the majority of the work. We receive the least by far of anybody.
This amount, 380,000, was also budgeted for 2020. We're in 2023, I'm working on 2024 already, sorry. This amount was passed by council through the budget for 2023 as a debt service line item in the budget. So, yeah, now we're working on the financing arm of getting that done.
And the lit we're trying to use for items, technology, we also, we're able to buy the cameras, what else? The?
Lock cameras.
Lock cameras, other items that are one-time purchases, so each year.
Parking enforcement.
Parking enforcement, so we can continue to purchase those items each year after year.
And Chief Snyder can speak on the importance of the fire truck as well, if he would like.
I agree, we definitely need another fire truck there.
With the ISO ratings and?
No, these police vests are talking about stopping rifles. Are we gonna be after people to kick in some money for that?
I think that's their plan. We've not had an update where they are for those dollars.
Yeah, 'cause Streeter sold enough fireworks to keep my dog awake, that he should have plenty of money to kick in.
Other questions for Mr. Schrader?
Well, I guess just to be clear on that, it would, that equates to 20% or so of total lit dollars, and that would be enough for the next 20 years? Is that accurate?
That would be enough for the debt service for the next 20 years? Is that what you're asking?
The 380 or 390, that's all paid via lit, right?
Yes, yeah. And we, we, when we were trying to structure this financing for the fire truck, it, we want it to be, we don't, we weren't looking to stretch it out 20 or 25 years. We were trying to, the mayor can speak to this, Sue, we were trying to, the reason the payment looks a little bit higher is because we're trying to stay within that eight to 15-year range to get this. Chief Snyder can speak to this as well. The cost of fire trucks continues to increase the longer we wait to finance this and get this put into place. It would really be nice for him, he knows more about this than.
I just want to add though.
Than I do.
So the fire truck, we don't want to be paying on a fire truck that would no longer be in service.
Right.
So we tried to keep it, tried to be efficient as possible. But when you look at it, also, if you have a million nine coming in from the lit, you've got a million each year off the top, that leaves 900,000. You've got then this amount, police will need some things, but you also have close to, I think, 100,000 between clothing allowance, probably a little more than 100,000 between clothing allowance and also fitness bonus, so.
There's not a lot of buffer.
Correct. And we're trying to protect because at some point, I mean, raises, to think that raises would come out of there for police and fire is, I don't see it. There wouldn't be enough of a raise. But also, we've brought our fire and our police up to a competitive rate, but we were also very behind on technology, cars, everything that's needed, and we'll have to still stay ahead of that. So Andy knows.
Yeah.
This was a commitment to him, and he's done, you won't hear from him again. But Chief Snyder, as you come up and just explain.
Please.
The importance of the truck and the requirement of having that.
Most definitely, thank you, Mayor. Mayor hit it on the head, life expectancy of this truck. 20 years, but ISO and NFPA indicate that this type of truck, a ladder truck like we're talking about, should be in frontline service for only 15 years. The current model that we have, the current truck we have in place right now is a 2006. So if you do the math, we're already behind times. That's why the urgency of getting this done and moving forward with it. If we had a second ladder truck, we could move it into a reserve status for another 10 years if we don't have that, but that's a cost-effective measure, too. We used to have another ladder truck, they're very expensive to maintain, especially when they're getting at that age. Even this one right now, we are, two weeks we're replacing the transmission in this truck, so at a cost of about $20,000. So you can see how those things are starting to add up and the urgency to keep moving this along. The mayor touched on, and I think Courtney touched on, timeframe again. It seems to be with the company that we started working with, which is the manufacturer of the current truck that we have, they've done an excellent job for us, but every time we seem to get a spec set, the price increased about $200,000. And that was not because the truck was changing, that was because of what the market is allowing for right now. We started looking at this with that company at 1.4 million dollars. It ended up, by the time we were ready at Thanksgiving time to move forward on this, that truck was up to just over $2 million. And that was just over a year's worth of time. This project's been going on for a while, you're just seeing what's coming forward to you right now because we've been working on this for a couple of years so far. So we, when we hit that $2 million mark and it was still looking to go up at that point, we went back and we looked at another manufacturer, which we've had, used in the past, always had good luck with. They were able to, they hadn't seen those price increases yet, but they were about to. We were able to lock in on price through the Board of Public Works. If we pay the truck upfront, which is another thing that Courtney is working on and Baker Tilly are working on, but this will allow us to do that with the contract signing, we're going to be at $1,598,000 for this truck. So substantial savings from what we were looking at, the little over $2 million. Just for, you know, to tell you, sake of example, Michigan City just purchased a ladder truck similar, but a little bit different, their needs are a little different than ours, little over $2 million. The truck that we were specing out, that I, like I said, I broke ties with back in November, that same truck they were looking to purchase is now $2.3 million for them to know that. So, and the build times that we're looking at, again, this company, we were, I say lucky, but I don't know how lucky that is. The contract came in with a 24-month build time on it. They, we were looking at a 36 to 40-month build time on the other truck. So like I said, we're thinking lucky at two years. We'd never experienced anything like that in the fire service where it takes two years to build a fire truck. But again, it's the importance because if we don't move forward with this, get this signed, all of the companies are putting clauses in their contracts that during the course of the build time, if you don't pay for these upfront, then you will incur any of the cost increases during the build time. So, and that's an unknown right now. We could end up paying substantially more for not moving forward with this. There's a lot of factors moving into it. I give credit, thank you to Courtney and to Baker Tilly for moving so quickly on this and getting this put into place and using the funds that we have available. Just, I know Sam mentioned about some things that are unknown, and that's why the 2.75 top limit on it. The fire training facility, we are looking at, with that facility, again, we're using the same process that we use for the truck, so it's not through a bid process. We use Sourcewell, which allows, it takes the bid process out because it's already went through and negotiated the cheapest price, the least expensive price, let's put it that way. And then you, we reap the benefit of the competitive, not having to go through competitive bidding, but still get the least expensive price. One of the things that we've run into already since we started these is initial numbers, is the company that we're looking at with, for this facility, the wages for this area as opposed to what they're used to, already has been $100,000 more into that cushion. But it's where we, you know, that's what we have to deal with. We want to make sure that we meet all of the state requirements as far as what the wages are. So again, Baker Tilly did a nice job making sure that we will get these projects done and will come in under budget, but it'll also not be any surprises to you with that number, and we'll look to be under that number.
And this bond will be paid off before the use of the fire truck is over, so that's the most important, right?
And this amount is for both, correct? The truck and the facility?
This should, and that'd be more for Sam, but this should cover everything included in their financing interest all the way across the board. That's my understanding.
Yep, that's correct.
Further questions for Chief Snyder?
Yes, Chief, I've got one still off the truck thing. If we're training police and firemen, do you think maybe there should be something in the contract that you should at least be held to two years before you leave or you pay the money back?
Not gonna find anyone?
Yeah.
Because Michigan City's been talking about it.
Michigan City has been talking about it, and they have, it sounds good upfront. They have found a lot of pushback from their departments because they feel that they're going to limit themselves even more because people will not sign into it. Their point, and I've talked to their chiefs, both their chiefs, is that their point is to get them in here, show them what we have to offer and make sure that they don't want to leave as long as we're competitive. And we're not expecting, we've mentioned this in the union, I've, you know, had a meeting with our union representatives last week, they're not expecting to be the highest paid because they know LaPorte's a great place to be. So if we can be competitive and show them what our department has, what the police department have, that we can keep them here and we won't have to worry about contracts to be signed. And we'll limit ourselves if we get into that contract issue, I think we will. I'm pretty sure we will.
Thanks.
Further questions for Chief Snyder? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the resolution. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We'll now move to item number 11, Introduction of an Ordinance. Councilwoman Kineshny.
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce an ordinance read in its entirety for the first time.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Councilwoman Kineshny.
An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana appropriating the proceeds of bonds of the City of LaPorte Redevelopment Authority, including investment earnings thereon and related matters. Whereas, the City of LaPorte Redevelopment Authority proposes to issue its lease rental revenues bonds, Series 2023, in a principal amount not to exceed $2,750,000 and to apply the proceeds of the bonds to the acquisition from the City of LaPorte of certain roads and streets in the city. And whereas, the city has determined to apply the proceeds from the sale of the real estate towards the cost of acquisition and equipping of a new fire, of a fire truck and acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of a fire training facility and related facilities in or serving the city, together with costs relating to the authority's issuance of the bonds. Whereas, the Common Council has found that there are insufficient funds available or provided for in the existing budget and tax levy, which may be applied to the cost of the project, and then extraordinary emergency exists for making of the additional appropriation here and after set out. And whereas, notice of hearing of said appropriation has been duly given by the publication as required by law, and the hearing on the said appropriation has been held at which all taxpayers and other interested persons had an opportunity to appear and express their views as to such appropriation. Now therefore, it, now therefore, be it ordained by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana as follows. Section 1, there is hereby appropriated a sum not to exceed $2,750,000 out of the proceeds of the sale of real estate, together with all investment earnings thereon, and any premium paid for the bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of the project, including related costs and costs of issuing the bonds. Such appropriation shall be in addition to all appropriations provided for in the existing budget and shall continue in effect until the completion of the described purposes. Section 2, the authorized City of LaPorte officials and representatives are hereby authorized, empowered, and directed on behalf of the city to take any other action as required or appropriate to effectuate this ordinance, including the filing of a report for this appropriation with the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance and any actions heretofore made or taken be, taken be and hereby are ratified and approved. Section 3, this ordinance shall take an effect and be in full force and effect from and after its adoption and ordinance.
With that, we'd like to invite Mr. Schrader back from Baker Tilly. Sam, if you could just give us a little explanation.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't have a ton to add here. I think the important point to make is that, again, even though it's the Redevelopment Authority that'll ultimately, at the end of the day, be issuing these bonds, those funds are gonna come back to the city, and this is just appropriating the use of those funds, you know, for obviously the description in the legal documents in terms of the project. So if, I could go into the weeds a little bit more on the lease financing structure if that's necessary at this time. If not, I think, I think this ordinance is pretty straightforward in its, in its description.
Questions for Mr. Schrader?
This reads to me like the 2.7 does not cover any of the fees relating to acquiring the bond, is that correct?
It, it does, it does pay those. It does pay those expenses as well.
Okay.
Yep. So, and again, as it current, as we've currently structured, the bonds, and again, everything's changing as, you know, Chief Snyder alluded to, those costs might change, but we're issuing to generate net proceeds of about 2.2 million between the facility and the truck. And then that leaves, you know, maybe, I want to say 100,000, 150,000 remaining for issuance expenses of the bond. So that would include bond council fees, any, any local attorney fees. That would include going through the competitive bond sale process and getting rated through standard and cores, and that would include Baker Tilly's fees as municipal advisor as well. So all of that would be, would be covered by this ordinance as well. Good question.
Further questions? Thank you, Sam. Do I have a motion?
Can we, do we do it next time?
Yeah, then there's.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Further questions? Mr. Schrader, thank you for your time.
Thank you for having me.
So let's now move to, are there any petitions and comments?
Nothing?
Standing committee reports. Council President Frankie.
Redevelopment Commission met June 28th. They discussed what we're discussing, and that's about it. No more updates.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board met on June 21st. The Five Year Master Plan and the Activity Center for Older Adults Strategic Plan were both adopted by the Board. A public input meeting regarding the new Stone Lake Lodge was held on June 6th. 23 residents were in attendance. A collaboration with the Activity Center for Older Adults and Meals on Wheels was discussed. Meals on Wheels would use the Activity Center space to distribute meals along with providing in-house meals. The Board is in favor of such a collaboration. And approval was given for Mark Schreiber and Pam Carroll to attend the Indiana Park and Recreation Association Conference in November. And then Traffic Commission will be meeting next Tuesday, the 11th, 5:00 p.m. at the police station.
Councilman Vincent.
Nothing to add this evening?
Councilman Galloway.
Police Merritt Commission will meet next Tuesday, the 11th, at 2:00 o'clock at the police station. And I have a question on the Park Department. There's a lady feeding the geese. Got a lot of complaints about all the, I gotta phrase this right so I don't get cut off. Goose poop. How's that? Tons of it down there. Now, they used to put up signs with Stone Lake, do not feed the.
There, there are around Clear Lake, and that's, I know it's a really bad problem around Clear Lake.
What, what's the shrug? Now, why don't we open up? Shotgun season there for a couple days on Clear Lake.
It is in the process. We're constantly trying to address that with the homeowner.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Galloway, anything else?
No, you didn't like the shotgun season? All right.
Councilwoman Cutler.
At the June meeting of the UEA, the current business and residential grant requirements were reviewed and revised by the Board to accommodate additional grant opportunities for both residents and businesses within the zone. A press release is planned for mid-July to announce the changes, and the updated applications will be available on the City of LaPorte website, and there will be no UEA meeting in July. The Alcohol Beverage Review Commission met last week to review an application submitted by Mucho Mas. The application was unanimously approved and is on the agenda tonight for council approval.
Councilwoman West?
The only thing I have to report tonight is August 2nd will be the next Fire Merritt Commission meeting at 6:30 at Station 1.
Councilwoman Kineszny.
The Airport Authority will meet next Wednesday, July 12th, at 5:15 at the airport, and the HPC's next meeting is scheduled for July 18th at 5:30 here in council chambers.
We'll now move Council President Frankie, real estate purchase agreement.
Your Honor, I move to read a purchase agreement. Read for it's first time.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council President Frankie.
This development agreement made on, to be determined, 2023 by the City of LaPorte, Indiana and Steiner Homes LTD, recitals, whereas the city owns two parcels of property totaling approximately 4.88 acres on 18th Street, whereas Steiner Homes desires to develop the development site into 22 residential housing units. Steiner Homes agrees to purchase parcels totaling approximately 4.88 acres for 171,700 dollars, subject to extension for any delay caused by the event of force majeure. Steiner Homes expects initial construction of the project to commence within 90 days after the closing date on the development site and expects the construction of those components of the project consisting of 22 residential units to continue for approximately 36 months. End of agreement.
Before I ask for a motion, Mr. Phillips, would you like to come forward? This is exciting times for housing, and it's great to see Mr. Steiner in the house.
Yes, we have Dan Steiner here with us this evening to answer any questions and to make any comments that he'd like to add to this. So we're excited to bring this, this development agreement to you. As the, as the agreement language that Mr. Frankie read noted, it's proposal for 22 to 24 new housing units in the form of paired housing units on the property on 18th Street, located between A Street and I Street on the south side. You have a packet of information that was passed out to you that shows a concept of what the homes would look like. There's a rendering of the actual homes in it, which indicates that there's going to likely be a mix of one and two-story paired homes, as well as a, there was an original layout that was submitted along with the, the proposal that was received by Steiner Homes in their bid for the purchase of the property, as well as a drawing that was put together as part of the negotiations between Steiner, the city, the schools, a lot of different parties involved to make this project happen. That kind of shows the layout of that, basically connecting the two properties by way of an access easement. There's a pending, pending action by the schools to make an additional development site available, as well as an easement east-west across the property so that we can increase the efficiency of the, you know, traffic going to and from and within the site. So it's my understanding that because the purchase price as proposed exceeds $50,000, the council needs to approve that purchase price. And so would respectfully request that the council approve that this evening and have to answer any questions that you have. And Mr. Steiner is here as well to add to this if he'd like, and answering questions as well, so.
So we'd like to just welcome Dan Steiner. I mean, he is one of the Steiner Homes, one of the top regional builders in northwest Indiana, and we want to welcome him with open arms. It's great to have you here this evening.
Thank you. You know, it's so calm in here compared to other town meetings, and your pictures are like, I'm back there almost sleeping. Not because you're bored. But I am excited to get going here, and it's good news already. We're building my daughter's house down there on, south of 18th Street, and someone saw her house, and I'm building the same house up in Legacy Hills now. And we have three or four other people cooking right now that probably are going to sign with us, but we also, we just put signs up down there, and we, we have three people that are really interested in the townhome. So that's, that's good for all of us. We're excited to get going. Like Craig says, there's 22 to 24 paired. We're gonna, we're gonna see what people, I'm trying to be mid threes to high threes because I feel like a lot of people can come in at that price point. Everything we do is an upgraded product. And, and, you know, it's like, we like to tell people that. I don't use any product in the house that's customer or contractor grade, you know, carpet, tile, wood. We just use, you know, really, really good product, and for us, it's gone a long way, you know? We've been able to be builder the year, the last three years in northwest Indiana, and we, we, we care about the product we build, and you'll see my project managers, they care. And they're out there, something's wrong, and we just did an eight unit over there in Marina Shores, and the guy was a little bit sloppy. And my project manager came in and he rode up walls of stuff, and the guy's like, I'm not fixing that. And he goes, yes, you are. And he did fix it. But that's how you build, you know? You gotta be committed to a quality product, and we are really committed to it. We're excited to be in LaPorte. I'm kind of surprised how much interest I've already gotten on those units. So it's good. We're talking to another guy that owns land up on the north end here, which is a really good-looking project. I'm building eight units out there in Marina Shores, and I'm not through insulation yet, and I sold, sold all eight units in the first June. Now I sold another one in the second unit, and I don't even, I haven't dug the hole yet. So they're going really well, so we might put those eight units up on the north side. It's just something that's in the works. So we're, we're very bullish on LaPorte. I hear a lot of buzz in, you know, I build in Lake County, Porter County, and LaPorte County. Haven't here so much, but in Lake County, I hear the buzz all the time. I'm leaving Lake County because it's too much like Chicago now. I mean, when you're in Lake County and you're sitting at a stoplight, you can, during the day, you can sit three times at the same stoplight, and that's just untenable in my mind, you know? So that's why people are saying, I'm ready to move to LaPorte. We're also building down in Demont stuff. I don't want to take your whole evening, but I'm, I'm excited about the project and would love to get going on it.
Dan, welcome. And I mean, we've been fortunate to have hometown builders with Ficus builders. Now it's great to have a regional builder. And Craig, I don't know, when is the last time a neighborhood's been built by a regional builder in LaPorte?
Probably 30-plus years. Yeah, it's been a while.
Questions for Mr. Steiner or Mr. Phillips?
Is this, I assume this is roadway, not, not the path moving that's there? Okay.
I'll clean it up next time I see you guys.
We're still in the planning stage. Okay, yes, this is the alleyway. We're bringing an alleyway in here, all the way across the back, across here, and then back out. The city didn't want like alleys or streets coming off that all the time, which I think's really smart.
Right.
I love building in communities where you have alleyways, so that's kind of the layout. Comes up one side, round and back down.
And trash will be picked up in that alleyway as well?
Yes. I shouldn't even answer that.
Yes, I believe that. I believe that's the case, yes. That's the intention. It would not be our intention to pick it up on 18th Street.
So this changed a little bit, and not to you, Mr. Steiner, but to Craig more so. Originally, I think all the ingress and egress was going to come off of A Street and behind it. No, not 18.
Oh, no. It never, no, the proposal was never for that to happen.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I think the, the schools were very adamant about that not happening, if I'm not mistaken, and so it's always been our intention for it to have a limited number of access points off of 18.
Further questions? Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Do I have a motion to approve?
You can't approve this tonight. Real quick, Craig Phillips was correct. Because of the purchase price over $50,000, it requires both Board of Works and council approval. One of the other items on the agenda tonight is an amended real estate exchange resolution with the school corporation. And if you kind of look at, at the, at the math that Mr. Steiner provided on, on the south side there, that because of the current homes on 18th Street, we had to do a little tweak of the project with the schools to make sure we had access there for the, for this project. And it was either at or above the average of the two appraisals, correct, Craig? Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Councilwoman Cutler, introduction of a resolution.
Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution read for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, or I'm sorry. I do have a motion, yes. And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Cutler.
A resolution of the Common Council of LaPorte, Indiana approving application for a municipal riverfront alcohol permit filed by Jose Marufo of Mucho Mas LLP. Whereas Indiana Code Section 7.1-3-20, the Act authorizes the legislative body of a city or town within the state of Indiana to designate and establish the boundaries of a municipal riverfront development project within its territorial boundaries. And whereas Section 16 of the Act allows the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission to issue a three-way, two-way, or one-way non-transferable permit to sell alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption only to an applicant who is the proprietor as owner or leasing or both of a restaurant within a municipal riverfront development project funded in part with state and city money without regard to any permit quotas as required by Indiana Code Section 7.1-3-22, all in furtherance of economic development. And whereas the City of LaPorte, the city is carrying out redevelopment activities along Lily Lake Channel, which is located within a redevelopment area known as TIF 1, established by the LaPorte Redevelopment Commission Resolution 7-2019 under the authority provided in Indiana Code Section 36-7-14, the project area. And whereas on August 28th, 2019, the LaPorte Redevelopment Commission, the commission, adopted Resolution Number 7-2019 recommending the creation of a municipal riverfront development project to encourage economic growth and development in the project area, along with local rules governing the issuance and renewal of applications for any permit authorized pursuant to the terms of this resolution. And whereas the Act authorizes the municipal riverfront development project to have boundaries of up to 3,000 feet or six city blocks from the waterway. And whereas the commission has determined that the boundaries of the municipal riverfront development project should be as identified on Exhibit A attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. And whereas on November 1st, 2021, the Common Council adopted Resolution R-18-2021 whereby the Common Council designated the area identified on Exhibit A as a municipal riverfront development project pursuant to Indiana Code Section 7.1-3-20-16 and 16.1. And whereas the Common Council thereafter established the LaPorte Alcohol Beverage Review Commission, Committee, LABRC, to recommend to the Common Council and mayor applications for alcohol permits, that the LABRC will strengthen the economic vitality of the municipal riverfront district and entire community. And whereas the LABRC has indicated that it has received an application from Jose Marufo of Mucho Mas LLP dated June 2nd, 2023 for a three-way riverfront alcohol permit for Mucho Mas LLP at 609 Lincoln Way, LaPorte, Indiana, 46350, the application, which the LABRC believes will strengthen the economic vitality of the municipal riverfront district and entire community. Whereas the, and whereas the LABRC has made a recommendation to the Common Council that the council approve the requests of Jose Marufo in the application and that the mayor certify to the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission that Mucho Mas LLP has met the statutory requirements to obtain a retailer's alcohol permit for beer, wine, and liquor pursuant to the City of LaPorte's riverfront development ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte that 1, the request of Jose Marufo on behalf of Mucho Mas LLP for a three-way riverfront alcohol permit at 609 Lincoln Way, LaPorte, Indiana, 46350 is hereby approved. Number 2, the mayor shall certify to the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission that Jose Marufo of Mucho Mas LLP has met the statutory requirements to obtain a retailer's alcohol permit for beer, wine, and liquor pursuant to the City of LaPorte's riverfront development ordinance. 3, Jose Marufo on behalf of Mucho Mas LLP is hereby permitted to apply for a retailer's alcohol permit for beer, wine, and liquor with the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission under the City of LaPorte's riverfront development ordinance. And 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after adoption. End of resolution.
Mr. Cook, is there anything you'd like to add, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to the council. I, Bird Cook, Executive Director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. I know you like to hear me pontificate on things, but I won't do that tonight. We've done a number of these, so I'll just mention a couple of things. Remind you that anyone who intends to apply for a license through the riverfront district has to go through the committee. So the committee was, was able to meet and discuss with Mucho Mas, and again, Councilwoman Cutler referenced, but received unanimous support from that body. Jose isn't able to be here tonight. Suzie's here with us, and I'm, I'll ask her to come to the mic here in just a second, but you all know Mucho Mas pretty well. I think we can easily see how being able to add a three-way liquor license will help augment what they do with their menu. I think it'll be very popular, and I'm really happy to see the program being used as much as it is, and I think it's dramatically helping our downtown. So with that, I will be quiet. Suzie, would you like to say something?
Welcome, Suzie. Glad to have you.
Thank you for having me. Well, you know, Mucho Mas, it had been here for 15 years, and looks like LaPorte is the place to be, so we would like to be here for another 15 years. We're planning to be familial, family restaurants like now. We're planning to be family restaurants, like now, we don't want to have a bar, we want to close 8:00, we want to close Sundays. We just want to have more options to the people of LaPorte, and we also have a lot of people coming from other towns, and sometimes people go to other locations because they don't have the options to have a beer with their families. So we just want to have more options for, for LaPorte and keep working for the community. And, and, well, thank you for your support and for everything you guys do for us. We really wanted to be ready for what is coming. We're growing, and the city looks amazing, so we want to look amazing, too.
Well, thank you, Suzie, and thank you for your commitment. I mean, you see Suzie at the market, you see her on Friday nights at our events, so thank you for Mucho Mas's commitment. Are there any questions for Suzie or Mr. Cook?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Councilman Galloway.
Your Honor, I'd like to read a, well, it's introduction of an amended and restated real estate exchange, exchange resolution between the City of LaPorte and LaPorte Community School Corporation.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Galloway.
Amended and restated real estate exchange resolution. This amended and restated real estate exchange resolution, this agreement is made this day by and between LaPorte Community School Corporation and the City of LaPorte, and the city are referred to within collectively as the parties. Take it away, Nick.
Mr. Otis.
Thank you. This was previously, there was, the city previously entered into a real estate exchange with the school corporation that's been beneficial, I think, to, to both parties, and we are doing just a slight amendment here, and this is for the parcel kind of directly behind this Steiner project. Already, in fact, the Steiner project on 18th Street was part of this originally. This was in the school corporation's hands, and the city acquired these parcels that's going to be part of the Steiner project. The school corporation got a parcel out off of Boyd Boulevard where the transportation center, I don't know if that's finished yet, but if not, it's.
Very close.
Very close. And then the city, the city is getting part of the, where the current transportation center is on A Street, and currently working with the school corporation on the Coke Building, how, how we're going to do that, because the city's got a plan to hopefully put that in a nonprofit's hands, but there's, it may be beneficial that the school does that versus the city for, because of Indiana Coke. So this amendment, while it's very long, is really just this parcel for the Steiner project. Anything else on that, Craig or Bert?
Mr. Cook.
Yes, so if I could just maybe add a couple things to what Nick said. So as you all know, you know, and I, a project of this size takes a great deal of partnership. We appreciate the school corporation, their attorney, Bill Kaminsky, Mark Franciscone, Nick Otis, Matt Haggenow, on behalf of the city, but working together in order to figure out how we best, you know, create the best project possible. So as Nick mentioned, there's a couple different things, but you see in your drawing an area in red, which is an easement, and then the area in yellow, which is actually the parcel transfers. This better assists Steiner with how they're going to develop the site, and we were able to make some concessions with a homeowner in that area that I think he was happy with and helped him feel comfortable with what's going on around him. And as such, the school corporation gave us, was willing to work with us to kind of adjust sort of the acreage that we're taking as part of that transaction, so.
And just to add, the Coke Building is still focused on affordable living for those with mental or physical disabilities, with wraparound services on-site, and we're appreciative of this opportunity, so that will continue. Questions for Mr. Cook? Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Councilwoman Ficus.
Your Honor, I move to introduce an ordinance read for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus.
An ordinance establishing a stop sign on C Street at its intersection with 8th Street. Whereas the Traffic Commission, after due consideration, has recommended to the Common Council of the City of LaPorte that a stop sign should be placed on C Street at its intersection with 8th Street. Now therefore be it, and is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, that Section 1, a stop sign shall be placed on C Street at its intersection with 8th Street. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approval by the mayor, and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
Do you mind sharing a little bit more about this?
Yeah, this was a resident who lives on C Street, came to Traffic Commission. She said that there was, she runs a daycare, there's a lot of speeding on C Street. The commission did go out, they looked at the area. There are a few blocks that there is no stop signs or anything, so we've already put up children at play signs to kind of help, but we would like also to have a stop sign placed.
So this is at the, kind of the northeast corner by the football stadium?
Exactly.
Like Kiwanis? Okay.
She lives across from, like, the bus garage.
And I think, Carol, you're head of the Traffic Commission, just a reminder to the public out there, slow down. I mean, we've got our kids out there, our future. Take it easy, slow down, pine late to all the different letter and number streets as well. We got kids everywhere.
We hear a lot of that, that, that people are just driving too fast.
Everywhere. Okay. Before we adjourn, I would like to say our thoughts and prayers go out to the Gary Travis family. Gary was a member on the Fire Merit Board for quite a few years. His son-in-law is Kelly Burke, our Assistant Fire Chief, and, you know, Gary was just a positive person in the community and loved LaPorte, so I want to make sure we recognize and then our thoughts and prayers for the family. Thank you to Kiwanis, it was a hot one yesterday, but it was a packed house and I think a great parade. We've got some work to do to find an organization to handle the fireworks for next year. Hopefully Rotary, some of you Rotarians can help put that together, maybe. And then don't forget Friday is Taco Fest, and that's usually packed, so you don't want to miss that Friday. And then Sunday, the market, the way I understand it, is there are 35.
There's a lot on Sunday.
35 vendors going to be there Sunday, and some cooking demonstrations, three nonprofits, and so it should be a good day, so if you find some time, get on out there. Any other comments from council?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Have a great night, everyone.